Good evening. It is February 11th at 5:30 PM and I will call the City Council, Virginia City Council meeting to order. Pam, could you take the role?
Councilor Johnson is absent. Motley?
Here.
Paulson?
Present.
Beyondich? Bachschnider?
Here.
Freedle?
Here.
Mayor Cuffee is absent.
Everyone stand as we say the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, Republic for which it stands, Nation under God. Item number five is a consent agenda. A motion will be to approve the consent agenda as listed. The following items will be enacted by one motion unless a counselor, a counselor or citizen of the city of Virginia requests that the item be considered separately. Item 5.1, approval and correction of the minutes of January 28th, 2025 council meeting. 5.2, adoption of finance resolution number 25-003, schedule of bills. Item 5.3, approve the travel request for Larry Cuffee Jr., mayor, to attend the city, city day on the hill, March 5th through the 6th, 2025, in St. Paul, Minnesota at a cost of $867.94. Looking for an approval.
I'll move the consent agenda.
Moved by Counselor Motley, supported by?
Support.
Supported by Counselor Bachschnider. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number six. Oh, I missed, I actually missed the first five minutes. So I don't know if there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak. We have a public forum time limited to five minutes. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak. Seeing none, we will move to appearances. We have none scheduled today. Moving to number seven, under unfinished business, 7.1, the clinic lease. I don't know if our legal has any updates on the clinic lease.
Sure, Lindsay told me that there's no updates at this time.
No updates at this time? Okay.
Do you have an update, Counselor Paulson, if I may? I did speak to our appraiser today. She's going to begin work on the appraisal process for the clinic as we are directed, and she hopes to have it within three to four weeks back to us.
Do we have a, an estimate for cost on that?
Five thousand.
Five thousand? Okay.
It was well within their purchasing limit to purchase, but.
Thank you for that.
I sent her as much information as I could. Just a few more things I need to send her, the original construction plans and the floor plans, but otherwise, I think we're in a good position, so.
Okay, thank you, Britt. Then item number eight, under discussion items, 8.1, is approve the first reading of the city ordinance, Chapter 11, Section 12.00, entitled Flood Plane, adding to Chapter 12 of the city code, located on page 31 in our packet, and I'm looking for a motion to approve the first reading.
I'll move.
Moved by Counselor Freedle. Support by Counselor Beyondich. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 8.2, approve the second reading, amending the city ordinance, Chapter 3, Section 3.20, Rules and Regulations Relating to Refuse, Collection, and Disposal, which is located on page 41 in our packet. I'm looking for a motion to approve the second reading.
I'll move.
Moved by Counselor Bachschnider. Is there support? Support by Counselor Beyondich. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 8.4, approve the second reading, amending the city ordinance, Chapter 10, Section 10.01, Storage, Deposit, and Disposal of Refuse, page 55 in the packet. I'm looking for a motion.
I'll move.
Okay. We want to take that back? Or do you want to go 8.4? Okay. Moved by Counselor Bachschnider. Is there support?
Or?
Support by Counselor Motley. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Sorry, I missed item 8.3. Approve the second reading, amending the city ordinance, Chapter 6, Section 6.35, Garbage and Refuse Haulers.
Removed.
Moved by Counselor Motley.
Support.
Support by Counselor Beyondich. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 8.5, approve the request for the Virginia Police Department to participate in the polar plunge on March 15th, 2025.
I'll move.
Moved by Counselor Bachschnider. Is there support?
Or?
Support by Counselor Freedle. Any further discussion?
Good luck to them.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Item number nine, onto committee reports. Britt C. Bennis will give that report. Thank you.
At the Committee of the Whole meeting on February 4th, 2025, we had a presentation by Mary McReynolds and Georgia Lane regarding the Age Friendly Virginia Initiative. Mr. Matt Reed was present to discuss the Alley Project, which bids will be opening, they were opening last Wednesday. And we're on the committee, next committee for this, meeting for discussion. It was moved and supported to approve the resolution accepting plans and specs, authorizing advertisement for bids for the 2023, 2024 street improvement project.
Moved.
Moved by Counselor Freedle. Is there support?
Or?
Support by Counselor Motley. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
It was moved and supported to approve the resolution authorizing advertisement for bids for the 2025 pavement rehab project.
I'll move.
Moved by Counselor Freedle. Support, supported by Counselor Beyondich. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Dana Hiltonen from the HRA was present to discuss the draft purchase agreement for the Washington Manor. The HRA is looking to purchase the Washington Manor to maintain it as housing, just like it is right now. It was moved and supported to approve the purchase agreement for the sale of Washington Manor.
I'll move.
Moved by Counselor Bachschnider. Is there support? Support by Counselor Beyondich. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
John Lewis from Carols Anderson was present to give an update on the Virginia Public Safety Center. Lewis commented on the solar array and recommended the approval of the change order to complete the design of the solar array system on proposed change order number 27, which is what's, show is, um, solar panels placed on the roof panel and a solar array out in the yard. It was moved and supported to approve change order number 27 for the solar design array in the amount of $15,720.93.
Looking for a motion?
I'll move.
Moved by Counselor Beyondich. Is there support?
Or?
Support by Counselor Freedle. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
There was discussion regarding the city solid waste fees and proposed increase for garbage rates. After discussion, it was moved and supported to request staff to provide more information on garbage can replacement of individual cans versus the 300 gallon cans, and how it relates to rate increases and a potential pilot program for individual cans with the cost involved.
Looking for a motion for approval?
I'll move.
Moved by Counselor Beyondich. Is there support?
Well, support for discussion.
Support by Counselor Freedle for discussion. Counselor Freedle?
I think it would be advisable that some data is collected, obviously, for the pilot route so that we would have comparable data at the beginning to the end of the pilot. So just kind of an FYI with regard to whoever's going to be maintaining that information.
Want to update that into next discussion?
I think we can.
Okay, so, um, are you okay with that? Okay. So all those in favor signify by saying?
Counselor?
I'm sorry, Counselor Motley. Go ahead.
Um, I just, I'll support this again, like I did at the call, just because we're not making any purchase of anything, but just being on the interview committee, I know for a fact that at least one of the garbage haulers that we interviewed would cover all new cans across the whole city at their expense, not the taxpayers. So, thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor Motley. So that information would be included then at the next Committee of the Whole meeting, Pam? That we'll be going through for discussion. Okay, so then, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
It was moved and supported to direct staff to facilitate a discussion comparing the proposals received during the interview process for solid waste vendors and what incremental increase would be versus a one-time fee.
I'm looking for a motion to approve?
I'll move.
Moved by Counselor Bachschnider. Is there support? Is there support?
All support.
Supported by Counselor Freedle. Any further discussion? Counselor Beyondich?
Can you explain exactly what that would be, Britt?
Wasn't at the meeting.
Oh, that's right. That's right, you were not.
I wasn't there for the discussion. I'm envisioning that we'll sit down and really just go through the RFPs like we had discussed about the proposed costs to residents, the proposed capital costs, the proposed, what it may look like.
This will kind of tie into the motion that was just made.
Correct.
It will be part of that information.
100% part of that discussion.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Counselor Motley?
I guess I kind of answered the question.
Did I encapsulate?
Yeah, I just know last week I made the motion for the $6 on recommendation of what the city wanted for increase in the garbage rates, but then it was, you know, failed. And we kind of got in awe with that, and then I think this is where this came from then after, but, okay, thanks.
So will that also be included at the Committee of the Whole for discussion next week?
Yep.
Okay, and you'll, we'll have all that information, Britt, coming forward. And then will be, will we also be discussing the garbage rates at that point?
We definitely could, yes.
Since it was, did it not pass? Is that?
Did not pass, correct.
Okay.
So that'd be a great time to talk about all that at the same time.
That discussion at the Committee of the Whole? Okay. So with that being said, there's any further, oh, further discussion? Counselor Bachschnider?
Thank you. Yeah, I think part of the discussion was the concern that I brought up of the percentage of the increase for residents versus business owners as well. And so if that can be part of the discussion as well, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Very good. Any other further discussion? Counselor Motley?
Would it be pertinent to add the interview committee's recommendation at the next Committee of the Whole for the garbage haulers? If we're talking about the garbage rates? Can we put that on the agenda for, if that's up to you, Britt?
Definitely couldn't include all that information.
Okay.
So we'd be having the overall conversation of garbage in general and understanding the costs associated with everything that was just described.
Correct. What was proposed, what city staff is saying we need to put back into the solid waste fund, and then what some potential options going forward.
And just for, for my clarification too, since I was also sick during the meeting. Is there a possibility, Sheri, that we could get the financials on the actual garbage fund? For that discussion? Okay, thank you. Any further discussion beyond that? Okay, so all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item G, oh, go ahead, Britt, sorry.
Item number 9.1G, it was moved and supported to direct staff to make a recommendation for the potential lease of a 2024 grader for discussion at this meeting. In your packet, there is a breakdown of what a lease amortization schedule will look like. On page 80 of your packet.
Okay, um, so what it states is that we're directing staff to make a recommendation for the potential lease of a 2024 grader for discussion at the next meeting. Since we don't have a full council present and mayor, would it be advisable to bring this forward to the next Committee of the Whole for continued discussion, Britt?
I'm going to have to defer to our finance director or to our city clerk because they're the one that obtained this information.
Sheri?
Um, I would suggest bringing it to the Committee of the Whole.
Okay. If that's okay, I guess, do we need a motion then to pull that forward, Britt, to the Committee of the Whole?
That would be great.
Okay, so I'm looking for a motion to move item G forward to the next Committee of the Whole for discussion, for further discussion.
Move.
Moved by Counselor Freedle. Is there support?
Support for discussion.
Support by Counselor Beyondich for discussion? Counselor Beyondich?
Also, at that meeting, could we have the department head? So we can understand where the dollars will be coming from. Thank you.
Any further, Counselor Bachschnider?
Thank you. Can we also have information at that meeting on any other graders that we may have? It sounds like this is going to be the purchase of a third grader, and I definitely have concerns with if we need all three, so I'd like that to be a part of the discussion. Thank you.
So, um, all those in favor, please signify by saying, do we have a motion, Pam? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Jim Rossford, a Public Works Director, was at the Committee of the Whole to request the authorization to purchase the 2008 Ford F-550 from the Virginia Public Utilities. It was moved and supported to approve the purchase of the 2004 Ford F-550 from the Virginia Public Utilities in the amount of $20,000.
Looking for a motion? So moved. Moved by Counselor Motley. Is there support? Support by Counselor Beyondich? Any further discussion? Counselor Beyondich?
Thank you. And here again, I asked our finance director, which directed me to the department head to make sure that in the budget, we have the money to purchase this. Thank you. Sheri? Like I mentioned before, this will have to come out of his budget, and he'll have to reduce a line item by that, that amount. Because it wasn't budgeted.
Okay, is there any further discussion or question? Counselor Freedle?
I mean, my understanding is that this vehicle has been used for a significant period of time and quite extensively, so we've utilized it, and they haven't needed it, thus we've been able to use it. It makes me wonder, though, why some kind of collaborative arrangement can't be made between two city agencies to continue to utilize, you know, available equipment without us actually having to write out a $20,000 check for it all at once, or, and I don't know if that's been explored by anybody to discuss that, or if this kind of transaction is even necessary between, you know, cooperative groups within the city organization, so I'm, I'm a little concerned about whether or not this is the route we should go, but if there hasn't been any other negotiations at some other level, then I think this is where they're at in terms of what they want to do to conclude the the use of the, the property, so. I struggle with it a little bit, it seems, in these days and times when we have available equipment, we should be able to utilize it in ways that don't cost us this kind of a expense, but I'm naive to what that all entails anyhow, so, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Freedle. I guess I do have a question, and I know, Britt, you weren't here either. Have we found any comparables? Is, is $20,000 for a 2008 F-550 a decent price, or was there any other options on the table for, or is it just because the Public Utilities has this vehicle, we've been using the vehicle, not paying for it for a couple of years, is what my understanding was? But has anything else been explored? And is this a decent price on this truck? And what will it be used for? I guess I missed that, what it, what it's being used for. Is it public works? Is it hauling? Is it?
Bucket truck?
It's a bucket truck.
Yeah. So it's a very specialized piece of equipment, and the utilities has deemed it as surplus, so they're going to sell it. And when, when they mentioned that to us, Jim Rossford said, well, we really would like to keep it ourselves because it's better than the one we have right now.
And do you feel that the, the price is reasonable for?
I do, I do.
Piece of equipment?
Yeah, yep.
Okay, I, I think that was my only question, and I missed part of that discussion. Is there any further discussion, Counselor Freedle?
I guess, while I lose my train of thought, let's go to Counselor Bachschnider and then come back to me and I'll repeat what I was going to say.
Britt, you just mentioned that it's better than the one that they have currently, so does that mean that there is one that's currently operational?
Ah, barely.
Okay.
Very barely.
Do you have anything further?
Yeah, it came to my mind.
Okay, Counselor Freedle?
Guess what I'm thinking is like, if a supervisor such as Jim is suggesting that he can find the money to do that, then I think he should propose to the finance director where it's specifically within his budget that's going to be extracted, and how that might impact somewhere else on the budget. That would be one advisable thing to do prior to buying it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Freedle. So it has been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Pam, roll call, please.
Motley?
Yes.
Paulson?
Aye.
Beyondich?
Aye.
Bachschnider?
No.
Freedle?
We, we are, they are going to sell it if we, and it's not ours to. We could lose it, correct?
Oh, aye, thank you.
Cuffee and Johnson are not here. Motion fails.
Motion fails. It's four to one. Need to have five to two to spend money.
I, I make a motion to, uh, what, basically what Counselor Freedle said, to, uh, ask our department head to make a recommendation of where he'll be finding the $20,000 within his line and bring it back to the Committee of the Whole for a discussion.
Got that motion? Moved by Counselor Bachschnider, supported by Counselor Freedle. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
It was moved and supported to table the travel policy for further information.
Can I ask a question on that?
Definitely.
Is that tabled to a specific time, or is it just tabled indefinitely?
It just says, it just says for further information. I don't think that voted if it was.
Can that be added to the Committee of the Whole for discussion?
Thank you, Vice Mayor Paulson. I believe, um, if Britt would have been able to get back to us last week, then we would have had the answer for tonight. So yes, we can push that to the call.
Okay, so do we need a motion to add that to the Committee of the Whole?
Please.
Looking for a motion?
I'll move.
Moved by Counselor Beyondich. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Counselor Bachschnider. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
It was moved and supported to approve the recommendation to appoint Michael Cipione to the Vida Board and to the council meeting for today for the official approval.
I'll move. Moved by Counselor Motley. Is there support? Supported by Counselor Beyondich. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
It was moved and supported to approve the draft request for proposals for animal control services.
Looking for a motion?
I'll move.
Moved by Counselor Bachschnider. Is there support? Supported by Counselor Beyondich. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
That is all the motions from the Committee of the Whole meeting.
Thank you, Britt. We're on to item 10, under Commission Liaison Reports. Is there any liaison that wishes to give a report this evening? Counselor Motley?
Um, yes, so I was briefly at the Parks and Rec meeting today, and then I had to leave to come here, but um, one, or two things. Just an update, one of the things on the Parks and Rec Commission is the Friends of the Greenhouse. And they do have a schedule of upcoming events, and their next upcoming event is Saturday, March 21st. It's Green Envy Volunteer Prep Party. Volunteers invited for prep pizza and plant sale planting. Again, that's Saturday, March 21st. And then another thing that was discussed while I was there and had to leave early was that uh, the city has, uh, Virginia has secured the SME conference every other year through 2035. So that's very big for the city in making money at the ITMEC. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor Motley. Any other reports? Moving on to department heads, under number 11. Is there any department head that would like to, wish to give a report this evening? Jenny?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. It's somewhat along the lines of a commission liaison report, but also a department head report. I just would like to remind everybody or acknowledge the fact that we will be hosting, um, the 2025 Connecting Entrepreneurial Communities Conference, March 20th through 21st in 2025, um, at the Iron Trails Motor Event Center. This conference is connecting, you know, communities, business leaders, economic development professionals, decision makers, and community and champion, community champions to build supportive networks for entrepreneurs that, to succeed. Vida has been essential to moving this conference forward. We're super excited. We're going to be bringing in lots of energy to the downtown area with breakout sessions. We're super appreciative of our business owners downtown in supporting this initiative and, um, hosting the breakout sessions at some of their businesses. Registration has been, or early bird registration has been extended to the end of this week, so if anybody is interested in it, they can certainly contact me. They can go on the University of Minnesota Extension website, or contact Vida, and we can get you all the details. So I just would like, wanted to remind everybody about that.
Thank you, Jenny, and thanks for all the hard work that you and Vida, um, some of the members have, have done on that. That should be an exciting time. Any other department head? Sheri, Pam? Eagle? Britt? Jody, come on up. heads? Sherri, Pam, Eagle, Britt, Jody, come on up.
Good evening, everyone. So, happy Tuesday. The library's been pretty busy. Just kind of a few reminders. If you would like to see Counselor Johnson on the roof of City Hall sleeping, I do have your, every 20 minutes, you can mark these off. We will, we are tracking at the library, so as soon as people start checking these in, we will, you'll be able to see us hit those milestones. This week at the library, tomorrow after school, we have a block building free play, so we have big blocks, little blocks, so anybody can come and create. Yes, if you are an adult and you want to come play with the building blocks, you can. On Thursday from 4:00 to 5:30, we have a genealogist who will be in the event room. If you have questions about your genealogy, or you're getting started, or you got stuck, she is there to answer your questions. And then we do have family story time on Friday at 10:30. Next week, closed on Monday for the holidays, so just remind people that we are closed Saturday and Monday. Baby story time, we have a whole bunch of wooden hearts. So next, on the 19th, we'll be making conversation hearts, so you can come and put whatever kind of thing you want on your heart. And then the book club is next week. And so it's Vera Wong's Unsolicited Advice for Murderers. I have not read this one, but apparently it's quite humorous. I was, we just got done with Friends of the Library meeting, and they were talking about it, and it took me a second to realize that they were actually talking about a book and not real people, so there you go. And we also have active play next week. So all of this is on our calendar. If you have any questions, give us a call at 218-748-7525.
Thank you so much, Jody. We'll go to number 12, under Council Reports, 12.1. We will be considering a counter offer for the purchase of Real Property Parcel, number 090-0180-00440. This portion of the meeting will be closed as per Minnesota State Statute 13D.05, subsection 3C.3, for real estate negotiations. Looking for a motion to go, Counselor Bachsneider?
Before we do that, I do have one additional question. At the last Committee of the Whole meeting, we did have quite a long discussion about the cannabis ordinance, and I would say nothing really happened. It sounds like some recent legislation and guidelines from our state came out, and that we kind of need to take action on that. So I'm, can I make a motion now to put the cannabis ordinance back on the next Committee of the Whole meeting? Thank you.
By Counselor Bachsneider, is there support? Or supported by Counselor Motley? Thank you for bringing that up. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. With that, I'm looking for a motion to go into closed session.
Go move.
Moved by Counselor Biondich. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Counselor Bachsneider. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. We are now in closed session.